To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Roll call please.
Dr. Baldino.
Here.
Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mrs. Dunnehey.
Here.
Mr. Owling.
Present.
Mr. Johnston.
Here.
Mr. Knob.
Here.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. We're gonna start the evening with a presentation. School of the Month is Bucktail Elementary. Try to keep it a little short, Matt.
Hello, everyone. My name is Maddie Mason. I'm a junior here at Bucktail High School. I'm here as a student representative to present to you a video on how truly amazing our school is. This year, we have been critically focusing on bringing together both the elementary school and the combined middle high school as one big family. This is not only athletics, but academics and community connections as well. This close-knit connection forms a sense of community pride that flourishes in our small but mighty town. Without further ado, here's our video.
Hi, my name is Josh Day. I am a science teacher here at Bucktail Middle School slash High School. Renova Elementary and Bucktail High School slash Middle School stand as an example of academic excellence, where a combination of passionate educators and driven students create a vibrant culture of learning. Recognizing the demand for future careers, the schools integrate cutting-edge technology resources to enrich educational experiences. Throughout personalized learning pathways and initiatives, teaching methods and students at the Renova Elementary and Bucktail High School slash Middle School not only absorb knowledge, but actively engage within it, driven by the intrinsic motivation to excel. Our students propel themselves to new heights of achievement through unwavering commitment to learning, not only prepares them for success in tomorrow's world, but also instills within them the confidence and resilience to overcome any obstacle they may encounter along the way.
Hi, I'm Wendy Daz. I teach fifth and sixth grade ELA here at Bucktail Middle School. Renova Elementary and Bucktail Middle and High School each have created positive behavior programs that foster growth among the students within each building. The schools have also begun collaborating to create campus-wide activities, fostering a culture of excellence and personal growth across their K through 12 campus. Through collaborative efforts, both schools have designed comprehensive programs that empower students to embody their best selves. Central to this initiative is the utilization of high school students as positive mentors for their younger peers at Renova Elementary, creating a supportive environment where leadership and mutual trust flourish. By promoting safety, kindness, responsibility, and respect, these PBIS programs not only shape behavior, but also cultivate essential life skills, preparing students to thrive in both academic and social spheres. Together, Renova Elementary and Bucktail Middle and High School exemplify the power of collaboration and nurturing the next generation of compassionate and capable leaders.
Hello, I'm Bruce Ransom. I've been teaching social studies here at Bucktail High School for the past 27 years, 29 years total in Keystone Central School District. Renova Elementary and Bucktail Middle High School stand as shining examples of small schools achieving big successes in athletics and extracurricular activities. Despite the size of our schools, both schools have cultivated robust programs that consistently exceed expectations. Whether it's on the field, court, stage, or in academic competitions, students from Renova and Bucktail showcase their talent, dedication, and sportsmanship at local, regional, and even state levels. Through a combination of passionate coaching, strong community support, and determination of our students, these schools demonstrate that size is no barrier to achieving greatness.
Hi, I'm Angela Lovell, and I am a first-grade teacher at Renova Elementary School. Renova Elementary and Bucktail Middle High School thrive on a family atmosphere where students and staff collaborate across all grade levels, creating a supportive environment that nurtures growth and mutual trust. Through joint assemblies, high school presentations to elementary students, and shared academic initiatives, the K to 12 campus fosters a sense of unity and mutual support. The elementary students look up to the high school students as role models. This motivates our kiddos and helps them excel academically and in extracurricular activities.
We are Renova Elementary.
We are Renova Elementary.
Are Renova Elementary.
We are Renova Elementary.
We are Bucktail Middle!
We are Bucktail Middle!
We are Bucktail Middle!
We are Bucktail Middle!
We are Bucktail.
We are Bucktail.
We are Bucktail!
We are Bucktail!
We are Bucktail!
We are Bucktail!
I might be a little biased, but I think it's the best presentation we've ever had. Bye.
Yeah, I just want to say a quick thank you to Dan Heiser. He's a sixth-grade teacher at Renova Elementary. He was the brains behind the theme as well as putting that video together. So I want to shout out to Dan Heiser. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving from something real excited to the audit report. That's a tough act to follow, that's for sure. Well, thanks, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. We'll try to keep this to maybe 20 minutes or so tonight. It's a lot of information to try to pack. It's a big operation. The preparation of these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, the audit thereof is a pretty technical, complex undertaking. So we're going to try to condense this down to maybe 20 minutes or so tonight, but happy to get into as much detail on any of the issues you might want to talk about. My name is John Compton. With me tonight is Adam Hartzell. We're both CPAs with Baker Tilly. And we're here to talk tonight about the June 30, 2023, single audit of Keystone Central School District. Just to try to give you some context, it is June 30, 2023, so it's the year that ended about nine months ago. The audit is complete. I think you may have the audit in draft form at this point in time. We're done, but we're ready to sign the reports, issue them in final form. The audit is due March 31st. As a June 30, 2023 entity, the audit would be due March 31st of 2024. So we've got maybe three weeks or so yet to kind of wrap things up. Things went well. This was, if, for those of you who were on the board last year, we talked a little bit about the fact that there was some turnover within your business office. The district had lost a longtime business manager and shortly afterwards, actually, you had lost a longtime assistant business manager. Then the business manager, then the incumbent assistant business manager left. So 2022 was pretty chaotic. Your assistant business manager took the position of business manager fall of 2022, I think it was. So that turnover had a little bit of, had a lot of impact in the June 30, 2022 audit. Still had some kind of lingering effects in the 2023 audit. The audit, just to kind of compare it with the prior year, the 2022 audit was issued in May of 2023. The 2023 audit is being issued in March of 2024, so we're about two months earlier than what we were last year. And it's on time this year. We think with time, probably, hopefully, within this year, things will kind of get back on track. Historically, the audit has been done around the holiday timeframe. So hopefully, June 30, 2024 will be here December of 2024 going over the audit. I think you'll see as we go through kind of the details, it was a good audit as these things go. Your general fund balance increased about $2 million, so that was a positive. We'll talk about some of those details here in a moment, but and please feel free to stop us as we go up to something that you would like to kind of dig into. There's our contact information on Slide 2. That would include our names and email addresses and so forth. If there's something that comes up tonight that you'd like to talk with us in more detail about, just feel free to email us or call the office and be happy to speak with you. This will leave this slide deck with you. There's probably 35 or so slides within this deck. We're going to touch on probably half of those here tonight. So I'm going to skip ahead to Slide 6. And just talk a little bit about the process. There are, you do prepare an annual financial statement, which we have here this evening. There are external third-party users of that financial statement. It goes to the federal government. There's a federal single audit clearinghouse that goes to the federal government provided Keystone just under $10 million in your June 30, 2023 year. So obviously, they would have an interest in this. It goes to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The state provided Keystone just under $43 million in fiscal 2023, so they're intimately interested in this process. And then it also, your bondholders would be interested in this, your taxpayers and so forth. So there are these external third parties that would have an interest in this process. Our role in this process, we're CPAs, we're independent of Keystone Central. We gather evidence, we test the numbers, we test the disclosures. We issue two opinions in this audit. We give an opinion on your financial statements or the number side of things. And then because there are significant federal financial assistance involved, we're kind of, the federal government is outsourcing the compliance piece of the audit to our firm, basically. So we're here on behalf of the federal government testing for compliance. And those users of your financial statements would look to the auditor's opinions in terms of, are the numbers accurate? Did you comply with all of these requirements and so forth? So the two opinions that were included in the audit, the opinion on the financial statements was what we refer to as an unmodified opinion. That's the highest level of assurance we can provide as auditors. It means, without exception, the financial statements and all the disclosures are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There's a governmental accounting standards board, the so-called GASB, who puts forth rules that state-level governments need to follow when you're reporting on your finances. So unmodified opinion on your financial statements. We also issued an unmodified opinion on the district's compliance with your major federal award programs. The two major federal award programs for Keystone Central for June 30, 2023 were your Title I programs and the ESER programs. It's the COVID assistance. It's kind of been a part of your operations for the past three years or so. So those opinions are as good as they get in this process. It's kind of a pass/fail thing. If we give an unmodified opinion on your financial statements and your compliance, it means, for all intents and purposes, you passed this process. So that was good to see. Over on Slide 8, just want to talk for a moment about your internal control over financial reporting. So I just mentioned that we didn't have any findings as it relates to your federal programs, but we did have a finding insofar as it relates to this internal control over financial reporting. Internal control over financial reporting is the way that you do things within your business office. It's the policies and procedures that you have in place. It's kind of the way that you go about recording things and reconciling things. Although this type of an audit doesn't involve the auditor giving an opinion on the internal control, we looked at it, we design our audit procedures around our understanding of the internal control, and if there's anything that we see as part of that process that we feel a governing body, in this case, the school board should be aware of, we have a responsibility to bring that to your attention. So the finding that we had as it relates to your internal control over financial reporting is we had a number of audit adjustments. Now, what does that mean? When we come in to start the audit, we're provided trial balances or the numbers of everything that took place over the past year. We go about auditing those numbers, and if we see something that we feel needs to be adjusted for one reason or another, we'll bring it to management's attention. The business manager will kind of talk through it and collectively decide whether or not the audit adjustment should be posted. There were a number of audit adjustments in the 2023 audit. It was a little atypical for Keystone. You typically have a really clean set of books. I think it was due in part to just the aforementioned turnover and the fact that you had some newer people in some of those roles. To put it in context, we're calling this a significant deficiency in your internal control. In the overall hierarchy of findings, that's kind of a lower-tier type finding. It's something that we, we need to bring to the board's attention. Think of it as a for-year information type of thing. Pretty certain, once things get back on track and kind of hitting on all cylinders here as people get acclimated to those roles, we should see this go away. But we did have some audit adjustments this year, which we need to bring to your attention. Unfortunately, these auditing standards that we follow, the expectation is the audit needs to be perfect. And if you find, you know, numbers that need adjusted, you start to get into this realm where we need to report it as a finding. So we did have a finding. That's probably the one area of a little concern as it relates to this audit, but otherwise, from our standpoint, all went well. Pause there to see if anyone has any questions on kind of the backdrop of the process just now.
Yes. Could you give us an example of what you mean by an adjustment? I mean, I'm not saying, you know, because you listed quite a few there and I
Right. Yep. Let's just say, one of the things we look for when we're doing an audit is accounts payable. Accounts payable will be any invoices or bills for goods or services that the district received prior to June 30, 2023 in this point. We want to make sure that that accounts payable listing is complete and that everything that is there should be there. We'll test activity in the next fiscal year. We'll test the payments that go out in the next fiscal year, especially around year-end, to see whether or not that was an item that should have been recorded as a payable and expensed in the prior year. So if we find something that was missing from that accounts payable list, we'll go to management and say, you know, really think this particular payable should be adjusted? I don't know if we had any of those particular findings in 2023, but that's an example.
Okay.
Another example might be capital assets, which would be your buildings and vehicles and equipment and that sort of thing. The accounting for that is, it can be a little involved. You start with what was on hand at June 30, 2022. Any capital items you purchased, any improvements to your buildings or HVAC or that sort of thing would be capitalized and then depreciated.
Sure.
And sometimes, you know, what gets capitalized versus what stays in expenses. I think we did have some audit adjustments there.
We did. There's just some things. Most of it was year-end cutoff, where something should have been in this year or should have been in the following year. It was the opposite year, so we had to kind of move it back and
Okay, so that was just, okay, sure enough, sure.
I think the regular day-to-day through-the-year stuff was, was good. It's just kind of around that year-end close, making sure everything fit in the right year. Where there was some, some things that just kind of slid through the cracks as you had some people that were in new roles, kind of getting acclimated and trying to learn everything. There's a lot to learn.
Sure.
So kind of getting everything in, as John mentioned, this auditing standards assume that we commit and everything's perfect, which we're all human.
Sure.
And so from time to time, there are things that just inadvertently slide into a different period than where they should be.
Okay, fair enough.
And by no means was it pervasive. You know, it was, you know how many adjustments we had? Do you know how many adjustments we had?
I think there were about eight, I think.
And after the thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of transactions that
Yeah, and so when you, so when we think about it, it's, John, we've got it classified as significant deficiency, which essentially means that it's something we think the board, a user of your financial statements, needs to know about, but it's not something that we think could lead to a material, big number misstatement of the numbers.
Thank you. That, that's, thank you.
Okay.
Well
Moving right along. Yes, slides 10 through 14, we're not going to cover those in detail. There are certain communications that are supposed to take place between the audit firm and the audit committee or finance committee, or in this case, the full board. We'll leave that information with you. You can read it. If you have questions, you know, you can certainly reach out to us. That brings us to Slide 16, and I'm going to turn it over to Adam at this point in time. We're going to get into some historical information, and now we're looking more at the financial side of things versus the theoretical side of things.
Yes, thank you, John. So what we're looking at here is looking at your general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district. We know that the district goes through a dozen annual operating budgets. Here's where you think numbers are going to, going to flow through the year. You kind of do that before the year even starts, so it's kind of, to some extent, looking at a crystal ball to say, what do we think is going to happen over the next 12 months? So now we're kind of here saying, okay, here's what you adopted. Here's where your actual results came in. From a revenue standpoint, your revenue budget was about $3.4 million less than what your actual revenues came in. So you collected, you received more money than you anticipated in the budget. Always a good thing to collect more than you anticipate. And I think some of that is just, there were some unknowns in some of the state funding that as a district, you budgeted conservatively, saying, we think we may get some of this, but we're not sure how much. And so you were on the low side of that estimate. You received more than what you anticipated, which again, is always a good thing. From an expenditure standpoint, you were about $3.2 million more than what you had anticipated. Some of that was related to some of the capital projects that were going on, where things got accelerated or just cost more than what you had anticipated when you put the budget together. At the end of the day, when we look at it and say, overall, how did you do? You're pretty good on the, from a budgetary standpoint, and you added a little over $2 million to your, your net fund balance. So you had a good year, $2 million more in revenue than you had in expenditures. As we look at it, kind of, as we look at it graphically, you can kind of see the bar charts here where the, the kind of pinkish line is what you budgeted. The greenish line is where your actuals were. So you can kind of see the, in the different categories visually where it ended up. The, the next slide then really gets into fund balance. So fund balance is essentially the equity that the district has. And, and this is as of a point in time, point in time being that June 30, 2023, end of business. If we look at this number anytime else throughout the year, it's going to be a different number because numbers are constantly moving. Your total fund balance for the general fund at June 30, 2023 was a little over $19 million. That's with the $2 million surplus pulled into that. And it's really broken down into a couple of different categories, the biggest of which are the assigned and unassigned. And by those, what it really talks about is how, how much constraint is there on the use of those resources? Unassigned means it's available. You can spend it for anything you want. Assigned kind of takes it up another step and says, and it's really the business office saying, we're going to take a part of this and earmark it for some specific purpose. And as we keep going up, the committed is, the board of directors, the school board, would take official action to say, we want to commit a piece of that for some future project. The further up that list you go, the kind of more restrictive the use of that funding is. So as we look at the $19 million, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, has some recommendations out there in terms of what is a healthy level of fund balance. And it's really, they say you should have two months of a typical operating budget. What kind of the benchmark that they have out there. It helps you to weather storms where if the state budget doesn't pass on time, you have some funds there that'll kind of tide you over before you have to go into emergency e-jerk. How do we fund payroll? How do we fund operations to keep the kids in school? As we look at that unassigned piece, that's about $5.9 million. The benchmark, it, two months, is about $13.4 million. So unassigned is low compared to that benchmark. When we bring in the other categories, so the committed and the assigned, that brings us up to the, the $19 million that we were, that I was talking about a minute ago. So overall, your general fund fund balance is healthy. If, when we pull all of those pieces together, you're where you need to be to kind of fund operations, to have that, that access there to kind of keep the doors open in the case of a rainy day. There's also, as John mentioned, there's other outside parties. You have debt out of the market.
Yeah.
There's regulators that are looking at your financials and saying, how creditworthy is the district?
Right.
This fund balance is something that they also look at when they assign your underlying credit rating. The better your underlying credit rating, if you would go out for new debt, that's going to take you, keep your interest rates at a lower level than if your credit rating was more risky than your, you, a borrower would want an additional return on their money. So your interest rates would be higher. As we look at your fund balance over the last couple of years, you can see it's, it's been trending up. So you've been managing your money, you've been, been monitoring that and, and doing what you need to do. Some piece of that is definitely related to some of the education stabilization funding. That additional funding that you've gotten from the federal government for different programs has really helped to add some to your fund balance, that you aren't having to raise real estate taxes to, to fund operations as much. And you're just able to continue to do, expand and do additional things through the district through the year.
Sure.
This trend here in your general fund fund balance is pretty similar to what we've seen with other schools. Seems like, as funny as it sounds, I'll put it this way, from a financial standpoint, the COVID timeframe was good for finances because most schools have had a pretty, pretty sizable increase in their general fund fund balance.
That, that would be interesting to see another line, another color there where the ESER was, you know? So, because it's sort of like when we go to do it next year when the ESER money's gone, we won't really be able to visually compare. So it would be nice to have a second color in each column, one representing ESER and then, quote, "the normal stuff."
That'll be his homework tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, and the red line that's in there is that GFOA, two months of a typical operating budget. Just kind of give you that, that sense of where that is over time. Yes, sir.
Can you make a guess at how this figure from 19 and 23 relate if you adjust for inflation?
I mean, inflation's definitely been up. We've seen a lot of that, more so, I would say, on the expenditure side of things, that your expenditures are raising. So to see that the fund balance is going up with inflation tells us that your, your revenues have been going up with that. Um, so to see that the fund balance is going up with inflation tells us that your your revenues have been going up with that. I don't know what the percentage is, but that's.
You've basically answered my concern.
I think that's kind of baked into the equation here. If we're measuring kind of that benchmark is. Two months worth of operating expenses out of the coming year and those expenses have been affected by inflation, it would. Effect the the benchmark.
Thank you.
So continue on with the general fund history here of the last five years, just of where the the. General fund revenues have come from. A lot of it is local. That's your your real estate, your earned income tax, those those types. And that's the piece that the district has control over. You set the rates for those. Uh, the state money, which is the individual largest share. That's a piece that is kind of allocated to the district based on formulas that that happen at the state level. Uh, we can definitely see that money has grown over time. Specifically from twenty two to twenty three, it there was a a big jump there, just with some of the extra funding that was was coming out. Whether it's level up funding or just the basic state aid increased for twenty three. And then the federal, you can see twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, where those jump up a little bit. That's your S R money kind of running through. That S R money is recognized to the extent that you have expenditures that meet the criteria for that program. So the the S R is kind of a break even. Most of that federal grant is all break even where you you aren't adding to your fund balances. You incur the expense and you recognize the revenue to the same amount. As we look at expenditures in a similar light, uh, you can see that the largest share of that is the. Uh, instruction, that's the provision of education to the students. That's the teachers in the classrooms and the supplies and all of those elements that go with that. And then behind that, by a a large margin then is the non-instructural. It's kind of the the support services. So it could be. The non-instructural staff, the administration, the business office, the the operation of the plant, the facilities, those types of things.
May I ask a question? Which would category would it fall under? Uh, for a retiree that's still getting health benefits, would that come, would that number go under instructional or would that be non-instructural?
It's not really part of.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
Let them finish their part.
I had a question. Thank you.
Yeah, your current retired or the current employees, their share, their contributions fit in the same bucket that their wages would be allocated to. So if it's a teacher, it would be in the instruction. If it's administration, it would be in that support service line.
Okay.
Okay, we'll talk about the uh, I think what you're talking about is the net pension liability. Uh, which is what the retirees in that future life, we'll talk about that in a bit.
Oh, thank you.
So as we look at kind of capital assets, your governmental capital assets were about fifty two million dollars. And in net carrying value, so that from a capital asset standpoint, you record the asset at what it costs to purchase it when you purchased it. And then you allocate that cost over the estimated number of years that you think it's going to be in service. You after twenty twenty three, you added about two point four million dollars to that capital asset number. And the allocation for the kind of use of that in twenty twenty three was about three point four or five million dollars. So your capital asset number did definitely decrease from twenty two to twenty three, just as. You used up a a year of the service life of those assets. Some of the major capital additions in twenty three were related to, you finished up the middle school track. Um, there were some parking lots that you finished up, Liberty Curtain. There was some ongoing kind of prep work and and work there. And then you you finished up some projects at Park Camp. And that's what really led to that two point four million dollar add addition in capital asset. You also have some capital assets in the food service fund. So food service being the the kitchen, the cafeterias, um, that that amount amounted to about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And your depreciation there, kind of the one year used was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on those net assets. As we look at the long term debt that's outstanding, there's two pieces that are here. There's the actual bonds that you have issued. And then there's some lease obligations that are included in there. So leases are typically, here are basically vehicles that you have on lease through enterprise. During twenty twenty three, you paid about two million dollars in principal payments on your outstanding debt. And you have about three hundred thousand dollars in lease payments on the leases. Your total amount outstanding was a little bit more than twenty five million dollars at June thirty twenty twenty three. From a pension standpoint. So employees currently contribute to Peasers, that's the the employment of the retirement system. For the year ended June thirty twenty three, that amounted to about eleven point seven million dollars. That was about thirty five point eight percent of the salaries that were. So for every dollar in salary that was paid. There was another thirty five point eight cents that went into Peasers to fund future retirement benefits. You can see kind of the trend here where that contributions kind of been relatively steady, but it has been trending upwards. As we look out, and this is kind of hypothetical, as we look out and say, what are the published rates that Peasers has for the contributions over the next? Several years. And we also have some assumptions built in for what's the the salary expense going to do over the next couple of years.
Adam, can I interrupt you for a moment? Could you explain where the Peasers rate, uh, how it's developed? Not by us, if I set by the state, you explain that, please.
Yeah, so what happens is the the Peasers system is what we refer to as a cost sharing multiple employer system. And by that, I mean that all of the dis- all of the school districts and some non-school entities participate in this plan. Where all of the employees go into that. Everybody contributes that and then that's where the benefits get paid out of is out of that that Peasers benefit plan. The, there's actuaries that are involved in determining those elements. And to fund the future liability of for the retiree, both the existing retirees. And the currently employed in people, uh, there's a contribution rate that is set to fund those benefits in the long term. Um, that's something that is set by Peasers and they have, like I said, they have actuaries that are involved in that that. That brought delve into the the map to say, what what do we think inflation is going to do? What are uh salaries going to increase? What's the lifespan of employees that both for current through their retirement and then through when they would ultimately pass away? All of those things get pulled together to come back and say, how much needs to be contributed to the plan? To make sure that there's assets available to fund those liabilities out through. The uh, the date the last. Currently working employee would ultimately pass away.
Okay, so it's fair to say in regards to what uh President Butch said is that. The business manager is given a number every year or. And then the business manager has to make sure that that number is automatically set aside. For Peasers. The the board has no control. We don't.
Correct.
So what? Actually, it's sort of correct. With the school district is only responsible for fifty percent. The state pays the other fifty percent of the Peasers. But it's something we have no control. Correct. We have, we have no input, no output. The only thing they they come to us and tell us is the amount that has to be put aside.
Right.
Yeah, and you are absolutely correct. The state does reimburse you for fifty percent of that. And it's not an amount that the district retains. It's every pay period or every. Periodically, the district will actually take and write a check to Peasers to say, here's the amount that was withheld. Uh, from employees that needs to be contributed and set aside in trust. With Peasers to fund those future liabilities. So it's it's money that's out the door. You have, you're basically. Funding it and and saying, we've done what we need to do.
That was well put. Thank you.
So like I said, here it's a kind of a hypothetical, but it gives you a little bit of a sense as to what the rates. Current published rates out through twenty twenty seven. So you can see they kind of drop down a little bit for twenty four and then they start to. To roll back up into the the mid thirty, thirty five, thirty six percent out into twenty twenty six, twenty seven. Those rates, like I said, are projections. That's what's published. There is some room that Peasers can adjust those as they. Get closer and say, what what's the investment market doing? Rather than the investment market does, then that has a bearing on how much money needs to be contributed to keep the plan fully, what they call fully funded.
You know, just one more, one more topic on this. If we were to look back from, say, twenty twenty one to twenty fifteen, twenty ten, two thousand five, et cetera, there these rates have gone up. Astronomically. There was a point in time, I think it was around two thousand. When the rate was next to zero. So you can imagine we had that on not only Keystone Central, but every school, every intermediate unit, every community college that is part of this. Or anchoring. Multiple employer plan. You would think after twenty years of paying at those rates, it would start to.
It was a shock. It was a shock.
You don't want me to get me commenting on the setup.
It's an expensive plant, no doubt. Well, we, I'm sure we've gone beyond our twenty minutes here. We don't want to overstay our welcome. Was there anything you absolutely, any final points you wanted to make before we?
No, I think. I know that this whole presentation was uploaded to your board document.
It's public.
Yep, so the information is there. As John mentioned, our contact information is at the front. So certainly, we're more than happy to to jump on a phone call. Set up a time, correspond through email, any questions that come up uh throughout the year.
And this, I I would view this as a good audit. Clean opinions, uh, nice increase in your general fund balance. We did have the the finding regarding the handful of audit adjustments. I wouldn't give too much weight on that. You know, your business office has historically done a really good job. They did again. So this year. Um, I would chalk it up to some of the turnover and people kind of getting back into those roles and we expect that to. Resolve itself here um in twenty twenty four, so. I would be proud of this one.
Well, we've got a great staff.
Thank you.
It was very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that exciting presentation.
It was. I thought it was.
It was almost as good as the Bachtan one. Not quite.
No question. There's way down.
Keep on the exciting part. We're going to move on to the next one agenda is the uh twenty four, twenty five budget update.
Budget update.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Perfect. Is it the timeline has not changed since? Now this you'll see has has changed. And this is a um, quite a difference in last month due to. I watched a, you know, high level, I watched and. Has been a webinar and on on there, they indicated that we should use the twenty two, twenty three. Numbers for our basic ed subsidy and they attached a spreadsheet that you could look at. So I went on and looked at it and there was a pretty. Big increase in what numbers I had used. Well, what they, what the day, what the. The state did was they, we did not receive level up. However, we received some kind of increase that now showed a difference. Almost comparable to level up. Um, they didn't call it that. They just said, this is your new base for twenty two, twenty three. Use it for twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five. So having used the new base, these numbers, again, you'll see they've changed fairly dramatically from what they did, they were last month. So now you can see twenty three, twenty four. Um, the shortfall is about one point five. That is due to the fact that I moved one point five million into next year for the S R funds. We will be using. Uh, about a million and a half of S R funds for next year. For July, August and September. And then it's, and then they are done. Yes, then they are done. Um, it is advantageous for us to roll it into next year. There are curriculum items, learning loss items that. We would like to purchase in twenty four, twenty five that just makes sense. So um, so it is, it's it's actually pretty advantageous. Even for budget purposes, it really is. Uh, smart to do that. I think we can close this gap uh for this year. We are, you know, going to. Pretty much halt spending. What if you haven't spent it by now, you might not need it for the end of the year. Uh, sort of things. We're going to really scrutinize purchasing from here until the end of the year. So. Again, we will look at that. Um, one area though that it is over, and I know we've touched on this, is technology. We know that that has actually. Uh, has been over budget. Even as of now, it's over budget. But we do have that committed million dollars of technology that we've probably had for about three years now. We may have to hit some of that committed budget for this year for technology. And then for twenty four, twenty five, we still do have the the gap of twenty or two point two, and this is showing the no tax increase. So the next slide will show the twenty five percent or the one point seven eight mil increase. If you were to do so, that closes that twenty four, twenty five gap to one point seven. The next slide will show a fifty percent increase. Again, you'll see the twenty four, twenty five gap decreasing to one point two. It's about five hundred thousand. Uh, decrease in your gap of what you would, of what additional real estate taxes would bring in. And the next slide is your seventy five percent. There, you're closing your gap to about eight hundred and twenty six thousand for the twenty four, twenty five year. What I would, um, I do want to mention though, if you, if there was a choice to possibly use. Um, general fund balance to close the gap for next year. I think you heard Adam say, we're at a healthy range. However, you start using that general fund balance to balance the budget. That that percentage will decrease. I just did a couple of um forecasts if we would decide to do that for twenty four, twenty five. Right now, we're sitting a little over seven percent, which is pretty healthy. If we would choose to use some of the general fund balance for next year to close that gap, you would probably drop somewhere around six point five. And then if you would choose to do it again in twenty five, twenty six, well, now you're looking at below five percent. So I want to just make sure you understand that as you use general fund balance, you're decreasing that. That seven to eight percent healthy fund balance.
And then how does that affect or does it affect our credit rating?
It it could and and take take note that we are taking out another bond. We took, we are proposing to take out two bonds for Liberty Curtain. We already took out one, that under ten million. In twenty five, I believe we are looking at taking out an an additional bond and that will be have to be. We will be rerated again by Moody's and so forth. So yes, it could have an effect on that as well. They do look at all of those. Numbers.
One other thing that will be affected, that we've. Been investing wisely or or capital funding. So we've been making a significant amount of interest off of that. So the more we deplete it, the less interest we get. So not only are we dropping what we're moving, but we're dropping interest also. So it compounds the problem.
It does. It does.
So much every dollar we take out, it's going to take two dollars to get back in.
Right. And you know, um, we are taking measures again on on how we can close that gap. Um, and we'll talk later about, you know, an incentive plan we're going to offer and so forth. But um, you know, I will need some guidance probably by next month and what direction we need to take. As far as any kind of tax increase, so that I know, you know, that's April, May, we'll have to really be concrete about what we. What direction we want to go in. So, any questions?
Thank you, Johnny. Uh, do we have any visitors signed up? Okay, yeah, we have Michelle Whitney. Michelle, if you would. Go ahead and log in, sign in and introduce yourself and remember you have four minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Michelle.
Awesome. Well, I'm here to tell you you're in violation of sunshine laws again, so you can stop the clock for four minutes. Sunshine law allows me to uh object to any infractions at any time during a meeting. I don't have to wait for public comment. But I was at your facilities meeting the other day and there is no room in that meeting for public comment. The facilities committee also took action at that committee meeting while it was not empowered to do so. The committee voted on behalf of the entire school board at that committee meeting. I would have been happy to have told you it that day, but like I said, there's no public comment there and that's a violation of sunshine law. I see Mr. Johnson saying no, is it not?
Not for committee meetings.
We're not going to get into the debate. We're not going to get into the debate. Please, please continue, Michelle.
Well, even more troublesome is the open ended change order procedure you're voting on this evening. As written, Mr. Pacella will have the ability to approve and spend fifteen thousand dollars a day with no oversight and no reporting requirements. I'm looking at it right here. Fifteen thousand dollars director uh Director of Property Services is authorized to review and approve up to fifteen thousand dollars. And then that just shoots straight over to the bills. I'll argue that that's not really legal either. And the reason being is that a contract is an agreement between parties creating mutual obligations that are enforceable by law. And if you refer to your public school code of nineteen forty nine, and you go to section five oh eight, it says majority vote required. Affirmative vote of a majority of all members of the Board of School Directors of in every school district duly recorded, showing how each member voted shall be required in order to take action on the following subjects, and it goes down through fixing the length of the school term, adopting textbooks, but here's the good one. Entering into contracts of any kind, including contracts for the purchase of fuel or any supplies where the amount involved exceeds one hundred dollars. Now you might say, but this isn't a contract, but it is an addendum or an amendment to a contract. And what's happening is that contractors are doing change change order work is being done for school districts without proper approval from the full board as it's legally required, and they're waiving their their future claim for payment. And that's happening throughout the the entire state. So that's something that definitely needs to be looked into because what you're doing very well could end you up in court with contractors who are not going to get paid because your contracts are going to be null and void. Also of concern is the fact that thirty thousand dollars may be processed up to thirty thousand dollars with review and authorization by the facilities committee, but your facilities committee isn't empowered to do that. You have to have full board vote. And at the facilities committee, you actually empowered yourselves to vote on behalf of the full board for twenty eight thousand dollars. You're not empowered to do that. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Moving right along, I guess next we're gonna have the student government reports and starting with Bucktail.
Nice shirt, Morgan. Thank you.
Start. Uh, we'd like to welcome Dr. Redmond, Keystone Central School District, since we didn't get to last month. We hope that his first month here has gone well. We're hoping to work with him to have more constructive discussions about issues in our building and hope to leave our building in a better state for future classes. Uh, that being said, last month on the fifteenth, in a special student government meeting, uh, Dr. Redmond actually joined us, and we had a rather constructive discussion about Bucktail in general. He had some questions for us. We had some questions or comments for him. Uh, he was he was very receptive to some of our ideas and concerns. Um. Yeah, he he gave us some feedback on some things that we're working on, like our block scheduling uh thing, which is coming up next. Uh, so once again, Dr. Evan, thank you for coming and talking with us. Uh, before I get into the block scheduling discussion, I wanted to recognize our boys and girls basketball teams. The boys won their game against Geltan to secure the district for single A championship title and are going to compete in state playoffs the first time since nineteen eighty nine. The Lady Bucks also made it to district playoffs this year, placing fourth after a hard fought game against the Lords Regional. So now into our block scheduling discussion. Uh, in our last report, I mentioned about uh, I mentioned about the block scheduling, our building and our group discussions about it. In January, on the eighteenth, uh, Mrs. Rebecca Huling joined us, and we had a lengthy discussion that lasted the entire forty minute wind block about lock scheduling. Uh, she gave us quite a lot of really good feedback about how to move forward with looking at the process of just looking at our scheduling, any way that we can improve it for teachers, students, parents, even. She kind of, most of her feedback is uh the process that's gonna be described in our slides coming up. So I I don't want to like say that that's all her idea because some of this might not be exactly what she told us to do, but it's kind of general guidance that we got from her. Um. Yeah, I kind of skipped over most of my text, so I guess we'll just move right into the slides for that one. So this is actually entirely made by me. So if there's anything wrong, you can blame me for that. So this is kind of the timeline of how this has kind of moved on this when we originally uh created the student government group way back in November. This is one of the thing, one of the first things brought up. We we kind of didn't know how to quite move move forward with it. It kind of got lost in discussions a little bit. So at some point, I think I think it was also during January or maybe November, I reached out to Dr. Martin with some questions about block scheduling, and she gave me. I mean, she answered all my questions pretty decently. She gave me some guidance. She was uh originally suggested to reach out to Mrs. Yelling about this. Um, now we're working on kind of moving forward with those ideas. You'll see that later in this presentation. This is gonna be really wordy, but you know, I'm not gonna talk about all of it. So this is kind of.
May I enter my first second?
Yes.
I have no idea what box scheduling is. Could you explain?
I was just gonna ask you, please describe.
Yeah, and why 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 this is the discussion item?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So um block scheduling, that is our current class schedule we run. So we have, I believe it's eighty four minute classes. So originally, when I moved over from the elementary school to the high school, we were running forty five minute classes, and we'd have I think it was seven periods a day. Now we've, it might have been nine. I can't remember. We moved to a system of we have five blocks a day, so they're twice as long as the pre the traditional uh class schedule. And that this kind of was, this is brought up with our discussion because you can probably imagine it's pretty hard for like teenagers to sit in a classroom for an hour and a half and try to pay attention to a teacher. So also, um, as you'll see. Yeah. So like, as you'll see, it's also hard for like teachers feel it's hard for them to plan for that length of a class. Um, I know a good example of where the block scheduling causes issues is like AP courses. So instead of being like a full year course and taking your test end of the school year, uh, for example, in our building, AP US history was first semester, the test is taken end of the second semester. So there's a very large gap between the actual class and the testing date. So that's just kind of one example that I've I've heard before. So um, these methods up here are kind of the three main information gathering methods that we're utilizing right now. Uh, I I sent out an email to, oh yeah, so that's the next slide. I sent out an email to uh schools similar to Bucktail. The main criteria was kind of under five hundred kids, and they're also combined kind of junior, senior, middle, high school building. Uh, we also put out two surveys to uh students and teachers, and the one that we're currently on and looking at on our next meetings are uh like actual data from test scores, attendance, uh behavior data. So like the uh the three tiers of support, we're looking at kind of how those have changed with block scheduling. So this is the long email that I sent to a bunch of different schools. Uh, it's kind of just introduces who I am, uh, what our schedule is, um, the questions that we kind of have in the that that we kind of were seeking the information about uh and then the bottom question or the bottom paragraph there, uh, if the district operates a CTC program like ours does, I I attach that to there to see how they ran that because that also largely dictates how our schedule is done because we have to, of course, bus kids for a half hour down here and then back. So to get the seat time, they need to be. We need to base everyone's schedules around that. So these are all the schools that I reached out to. Uh, we got complete responses from six of the schools, um, which I'm kind of disappointed about, but there were still some very good responses in there. Uh, as you can see, there are some buildings that are rather closely sized of Bucktail and a kind of there's some buildings like Ridgeway is rather large compared to us. So this is uh the survey data for what we collected. There's a bunch of uh pie charts in the next couple of slides. Um, I'm not gonna re I I'll explain what the questions are more indepthly and then. Yeah, so we got eighty responses for our student survey, which is I want to say approximately three fifths of the student population of Bucktail, maybe about half. And then we got all of our teachers in the high school to respond. So uh, this one is both the percentage and and uh actual number of students that we got to respond. You can see there's quite a lot of eleventh, seventh, and eighth graders that responded to this. I was hoping for a lot more responses out of other grades, but this is what we have to work with after two weeks. So this is a question that is specifically asked with the length of classes, and this is mostly is going to be perception questions. So you should have to kind of keep that in mind. Uh. Majority of the students, except for a singular student, felt that our classes were either too long or reasonable length, but over half of the students felt they were too long. And then uh three quarters of our teachers felt that our classes are too long. And this one is specifically about classwork, and this can be looked at a couple of different ways. I'd like to not think that our teachers are incompetent, and that is just kind of hard to plan for that class length. So obviously, students uh three quarters of the students kind of feel like classwork is kind of boring and just busy work, and over half the teachers uh at least somewhat agree that is it is a struggle to fill that entire eighty four minutes with classwork. For this one, this is uh on another perception question. You you can imagine most students would agree that they feel bored in class. Um, our teachers, actually, I was surprised they were very honest with this one. Uh, three quarters of them, some at least somewhat agree that students actually become disengaged during class, which I feel like because I've sat through, I think, a class with every teacher in our building, and I know how they teach, I think this is more of resulting from the class length. That's my personal opinion, though. Um, so this one is another thing about classes offered because because of block scheduling, teachers can only teach four classes a quarter. So um we've seen somewhat of a decrease in the amount of classes that we can take because of that.
You mean your choices?
Yeah, or like our elective choices and stuff like that. So uh no one said that we have too many classes offered in either a teacher or student group. And over half of the students said that we have too few classes offered, and three quarters of the teachers said that we have too few classes offered. And this one is a question specifically directed towards the teachers. Uh. Over half of our teachers said that, actually about half our teachers said that a sixty minute class would be preferable. Uh, when we talked with Mrs. Huling, she told us that the middle school actually runs that class length, and their teachers are actually rather happy with that class length. Um. About a quarter of the teachers did say eighty minute classes were preferable, and from this survey, we kind of realized that that is also based off of the subject of the classes. So certain classes like science might be better with longer classes because of things like labs, but for example, uh kind of like middle school level elective classes might not need that full hour and a half. Uh, this is a question that uh was a teacher request to put in here. So we actually had two teachers that said that their classrooms are not sufficient to teach all the classes they're assigned. So an example of this, we have a dedicated science room that is set up to be a science room, teaches math, technology question, technology classes, and science classes in one room. So situations like that kind of also kind of stem from block scheduling just because we have to work with the same amount of teachers with less opportunities to for different classes to teach. So we kind of have to squeeze everything in. Uh, and this is a another question directed at specifically teachers. Um, this one talks about is asking about the communication from Keystone Central on the professional development support that was put out because I was informed that there there was support put out. And over half the teachers were not aware that the support was put out. And one thing that I've heard a couple of times is that this could be due to that the training was put up was put out to teachers while we were online during the pandemic. So this might have that definitely affected this. And this here's a question that was put out to only eleven to twelfth graders because they were the only classes that would have remembered our traditional scheduling. So I was actually surprised by this one. About two thirds of the juniors and seniors said that they prefer block scheduling. Um, I I can't tell you why this is because the other survey chart says that most of the students think the classes are too long. Uh, I think that might be because juniors and seniors are taking more advanced level classes, and you might need a longer class for that. So and this is our last slide, so we'll stop talking soon. These are the next steps that we're looking into. So we're looking at attendance data, uh yearly testing data and behavior data. So far, um, I'm currently in possession of our attendance data going back to two thousand eighteen. Uh, we've got the average daily attendance for that, and we're gonna be looking at that at our next meeting. We need to reach out to uh some some other district staff to get our testing data and our behavior data. But we'll be looking at those sometime over the next two or three months.
Great.
And that is where we are on that discussion so far. And that is all I have today.
Thank you, Morgan. Study yourself?
Yes.
My compliments. That is much better than the work I've seen from a lot of people behind your years.
Yeah. Would you feel okay with this if it's okay with your principal and administration superintendent? That is not on board docs. Your presentation. Would you feel comfortable if they feel that it would be appropriate to put it on board docs so the public can see that?
I would I would love to have that on board docs.
Okay.
Out there.
Great. You did a terrific job.
One thing you forgot. Forgot about the girl that's rustling down in states.
Yes, I forgot about Kendall Wagner. I think she actually.
She won twice today.
Yeah, she won two games.
Thanks, Morgan.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I uh, can I just ask a quick information? I think that the Dr. Redmond might know. I mean, when I was introduced to this type of psychology, optimum attention span was about forty five minutes. Has there been new data to show that it's longer than that?
Uh, there's a lot of different ways to think about the idea of attention span. Uh, typically for a an intensive chunk of of learning or interaction, it's more like twelve minutes. Uh, and we don't expect any of our teachers to lecture for forty five minutes or certainly not for eighty four minutes. Uh, so um I'm hoping that that's not happening, uh, because it's certainly not best practice in terms of educational.
Well, that was my point. It seems like by eighty minutes, it's gonna have to be something that really interests you, and it is really good for you to be paying attention.
The intent of block scheduling is not to have eighty three lectures.
Well, I'm not even talking about lectures. I'm talking about doing anything. Just focus. Focus.
Next up, that's a lot of high school student record. You like introduce yourself, please?
Hello, my name is Jonas Madel, and I am here in lieu of Claire, who is currently at um at at practice for our play Mamma Mia. That will be happening March twenty second to twenty to the twenty four. All right. So as an update to the progress on the formation of our student government, we have officially ratified our student government constitution uh that happened on February second, and we're looking forward to giving a formal presentation with some of students there um at the April meeting outlining the constitution and the makeup of the organization. Um, at our February twenty ninth meeting with Dr. Redmond, Mr. Verell or Mr. Really joined us. Um, we had a very productive meeting and discussed many issues relevant to our current situation. We appreciate that Dr. Redmond truly wanted to hear our concerns and provided ideas and his thoughts uh for the future. We look forward to continuing our dialogue with admin and you, the board, moving forward. And then uh on February sixteenth, we had a stall day held. The event raised. The event raised one thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars fifty-three cents for Saint Jude's Hospital. Um, we currently have swimmers and boys and girls wrestlers competing in state finals, uh, in the tournament this weekend. Um, we'd also like to highlight Greg Stubar for making it to the All-State Orchestra. Uh, senior projects are taking place on March eleventh and there will also be multiple PBIS rewards opportunities, uh, in the coming weeks. Moving forward.
Hey, thank you very much. Same dude is excellent. Last but not least, is Central Mountain Middle School.
Hello, my name is Karen Ryan and I'm the president of Central Mountain Middle School. We've been working on a couple of things in hopes of improving our middle school. The first thing we did was we made a survey and released it to the students and we asked them what they thought we could improve on as a school. And we got a lot of, um, requests for more food or vending machine or things like that. So, since we looked into getting a vending machine, but. We decided that it was kind of a big pain and we didn't exactly wanna do that and bother with all the. Nutrition regulations and things, so we decided to make more a snack cart type thing. Which we met with. Food department, I think Monday about that to see, like, what our restrictions were exactly. And we're hoping to have that done in the weeks coming after spring break.
That's wonderful, so you'd have things offered that are made there possibly and then you'd sell them?
Uh, yeah, we were looking at more prepackaged things that the students could then eat later.
Understand.
Typically, you're looking at having a vending card instead of vending machine because it's simpler.
Exactly, yeah. So, um, another thing we've done recently is we had a trench football tournament, which is just dodgeball. And we had only eight teams participate for seventh and eighth grade. But we had, I believe, sixteen teams participate in that for fifth and sixth grade and it's a good time, we sell snacks and. Play some dodgeball, have a nice little torment, and we get medals and shirt for our winners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, it's gonna be tough to follow those three, but. Time this report is next.
All right, I have a few things, uh, and for the sake of time, we'll try to get through, uh, through pretty quick. So, uh, our school breakfast expansion grant, uh, we won, um. So, uh, Sharon and her team went, uh, went through the application and so the grant application for the Central Mountain High School has been approved for funding. Uh, budget amount of of almost seven thousand dollars and is contingent on meeting some grant requirements. But from February of this year till December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four, that that money can be used to help the school breakfast expansion.
Great.
We've also received a five hundred dollar grant from the Pittsburgh Regional Food Service Directors in January. For the high school food pantry care closet, so again, thanks to Sharon Burger and her team, um. Uh, other things, yesterday Leadership Clinton County was here, I was able to speak to them for a while as were, uh, some of our directors. And then they spent some time with our CTC, uh. Students, learning about kind of what was going on and, uh, thank you for coming yesterday for the. County and for touring along and and kinda learning a little bit more about what our students are working on. Uh, earlier this week, the Clinton County Music Festival was, uh, hosted here, um. And there's a concert on Tuesday night, all in all forty-eight students participated and those students came from Central Mountain Middle School, Central Mountain High School. Bucktail Middle and High School and the Sugar Valley Rural Charter School, so it was very much a countywide collaboration. Uh, they came together and spent a couple of days learning, uh, how to play together after having practiced all of their. Pieces individually and it came together, it's the first time for about fifteen years that the the music festival was put on. And, um, I know that, uh, Ms. Crest was really excited to bring it back and get it started again. And the the other directors were really instrumental in bringing it all together as well. I wanna talk.
Accessible to the public?
Yes, it was a free and public event, so we'll we'll do, uh, next year, it is likely to happen at at, uh, Bucktail. Uh, do kind of the same event, so we'll try to do a little bit better job of getting the word out, uh, so more community members.
Pretty cool event.
Um, there's a lot of. Really wonderful things going on with our student athletes, but I wanna spend a couple of minutes highlighting some of the things that are going on with our student performers. So, uh, as was mentioned earlier, the production of Mamma Mia starts on March twenty-second. Uh, so please get your tickets and show up, I'm excited for that. We have lots of music, um, musical accomplishments here at the Central Mountain High School, there's district band. Nine students attended Glendale High School, um, competition, regional band, we had three students go. And then all-state band, one sto- student so far has has qualified. Uh, district chorus, we had six students attend, uh, regional, uh, is happening right now. And we have three students there, uh, district orchestra, um, was in February and we had five students go to that. Western region or, uh, orchestra is coming up later in March and we have two students going to that. Uh, the district jazz band was mid-February, we had six students, uh, attend that. Uh, Keystone String Fest was back in January, we had five high school students and two middle school students attend that. Uh, high school has twenty-five students attending, I'm sorry, that's twenty-five students from high school, we're at the, the, uh. County Music Festival that was earlier this week. And then again, we had students from the middle school, Bucktail and Sugar Valley. Uh, from Bucktail, we had one student participate in the PMEA District Choir, three students participate in district band. Uh, and of course, they came down for the concert earlier this week. And the student government group from Bucktail is going to be visiting the state capitol on the twenty-ninth of April to see how, see how the state's legislative body works. One last note about legislators, on Monday, you heard, uh, earlier that we're going to have some students doing their senior presentations. Representative Takak will be here to look at that, I've invited Senator Dush as well. Uh, and haven't heard back from him, but he may be in attendance to see our students show off their good work as well.
That's great.
And that's what I have.
Move right into committee reports, uh, start with policy committee.
Uh, we met on February fourteenth. Uh, we had a little bit of a discussion. Uh, on the naming committee, uh, Ms. Lynch was asking that. We changed some things around and put four members on committees and I can let her get into. Uh. Agreement, but we agreed to table it until all board members could be together for a review on it. Uh, the naming facilities, we, uh, sent it stuff out to PSBA to get their opinion on it. PSBA is, uh, has no policy on it and they don't want a policy on it. So, at this point in time, I'm just gonna ask that we take it back to the next policy meeting, because I got some ideas. Uh, and like to get some other things going on it, Dr. Redmond was gonna look at an AR, uh, six request. And we got a lot of things to go over before we start voting on that. So I'm gonna request that we just send that back to policy. Uh. They made an amendment on some meeting minutes, it was no big deal. And they discussed whether meeting minutes should be taken for executive meetings, that's a no-no, you don't do that. So, uh, that's pretty much it, the KCSD policy. Silicon review, there was nothing for that meeting and we're. Administrators are reviewing the policies for our next meeting and they'll bring us up to date. And, uh, the PSBA revision, I think we're ready to go on that policy two fifty-four. Is a interstate compact on educational opportunity for military children. Foster children are included in that, we found out, and we're pretty much doing it now, we just gotta adopt it. That's it.
All right, thank you, uh, we didn't have a safety and security meeting, uh, curriculum, co-curriculum.
Um, so we met on the twentieth, uh, Megan Hall, uh, gave us an update on the gifted programming. Uh, we're looking into putting a gifted universal screener in place to help identify gifted students at an early age. Uh, we're looking at two, to test two screeners this spring, um, and see which one we want to use, um. CTC Adult Education is accepting registration for spring pers- personal interest classes. Um, we have ten students who will be receiving their certificates this semester. Who are already employed with our partners for the CNC pre-apprenticeships, um. We have CNC registered apprenticeship classes that started in January for thirty-two weeks for adults through PMF Industries. Um, industrial maintenance technician is in the process of getting students reg- registered for that. Um, for HealthOP, we have five EMT certified students that part, we partnered with. Lock Haven EMS for that, we have five CNA students registered, or through, um, UPMC. Uh, we have eighteen students that started the PCT or the Patient Care Technician Program. Uh, students may also get certified in EKG and phlebotomy. And we have the weatherization certification, it's new certification, we partnered with DEP for secondary, post-secondary students. Through Green Energy Center Partnership at Penn College, uh, there will be fun- funding through DEP. And we are one of five schools that got in on the first round.
Hey, thank you very much, uh, next would be personnel, Tracy.
Um, so you'll see on the agenda tonight, um, the secretary's contract that we have finished that. Um, we hope to vote on next week and also work agreement for the school resource, for the school police and security officers. And we are all still in the middle of negotiations with our support.
Hi, I just, I sent out an email earlier that I would ask this question, um, the contracts our solicitor did review them and.
Yes.
Okay. Public meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, facilities, Jeff?
Okay, I'll try to go through quickly, we had, uh, we met on the twenty-seventh of February last week. And we had basically four items on our agenda for that meeting, uh, first of all, we were, uh. Expecting to have Wes Feringer, uh, to to present to us about the DCNR grants and the process to. How, what that is involved with and how to go about that, however, he was not able to attend, um. He was, you know, at the last minute, he wasn't able to get there, so. Also, at that meeting, uh, was Tony Walker, uh, who's on, uh, Mill Hall Borough Council. And he was wanting to know if, uh, was some way that he could work with the school district on work, on the tennis courts at the middle school. And making some repairs on that, and he was hoping that we could, they could tie in with the DCNR grant. Um, actually, the, the school district can't really apply for that directly, we could. We get a small portion of whatever grant, but we have to partner with a, with the entity and in this case, it would be the Mill Hall Borough and. Um, what we decided, I, we, I don't think, uh, Dr. Redmond and I looked at the tennis courts, um. But, uh, shortly before that meeting, the day before, I think they can be, there's some repairs that could be made to those, uh, to those courts. And I guess, um, Mr. Pasala was going to get us some, some idea of what that would cost and also Tony Walker said that. We suggested that he go, um, contact Wes Feringer. On behalf of the Borough Council and work, have them work with him to maybe see what the, they need to do for the DCNR grant and then. Maybe be able, we could possibly partner with them, so, uh, at that point, um. That's where that stands, so hopefully we'll be able to find out more about that, uh, in in future meetings. Second item was, uh, Little Bitty Curtain update from Mr. Pasella, he. Said that they were in the process of, uh, doing the asbestos removal and I believe most of that is in the floor tiles, uh, that was. The cost of that was, is gonna be approximately seventy-five thousand dollars and we had initially thought that we might be able to use some of the new Act Thirty-four money. That the, I think it's seven hundred million dollars or whatever that's been set aside by the state, which was supposed to be Level Up money. But it was set aside for construction purposes, however, uh, the process for applying for that. Is probably gonna take too long to do, uh, the work that needs to be done right now. And so we was kind of the opinion of the committee after we discussed it to go ahead since that money. For that purpose has been ta- uh, already incorporated into the, to the budget for that, for the project. So rather than try to take time to go into the Act Thirty-four process, which is hard to tell how long it would take. The other, uh, we, couple of things that they discovered during the process, uh, under the, there is old sewer plant building. Uh, on the site and during the excavation process, they found, uh, some, this was, there was all. Underground thing filled with sediment and sand and dirt and. They had to remediate that, so it's, that's what the, uh, that's a cost to do that would be approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. At the max, that would not, uh, would not exceed that. Um, we needed to get that done, um, in a timely manner, so we couldn't wait around for two weeks. For the board meeting and so, um. Mr. Knopf said, uh, and and the committee agreed with him that since that was. Pretty much an emergency situation to keep it, keep the process moving, that we would go ahead and approve that. Based on, as a change order and which will take me in a minute here to the next item, we also found. That, um. There was underneath the sewer boating, there was also a tank with some old stone and there was some, some residue of. What they think is probably was some motor oil that was dumped in there back, maybe back in the seventies. That was also remediated, the soil with that has been tested, we'll have the results of that. Uh, here probably in the next week or two. Just real quick, at that point, this was like over a week ago, the retention pond on the site has been, uh. Was ninety-five percent complete, they were, they were, they were going to start stripping off the asphalt at that point. And I think they, they haven't already started and maybe Brett, you can tell me if that's true, but I think they were. Ready to start doing the footers, that was one of the reasons we wanted to move ahead with that. This coming Monday, okay, thank you. The other thing that, uh, brings me to the change order procedure, which you will see in your agenda tonight. For, that we'll be voting on next week, uh, we, which is, this is pretty typical, uh, and. I think it has happened in most of our voting projects and I think probably most districts use this. They give authorization to usually their property service person to authorize a change order to keep. The process and the project moving up to a certain dollar amount, in this case, uh, was, uh, fifteen thousand dollars if you run into a change. That needed to be done, we, uh, that would, Mr. Pasala could do that up to that point. From that point to thirty thousand dollars, it would have to come to the committee and anything above that, of course, uh, would go back to the full board. Uh, and that is also, I think, included the, the whole rundown and that's, that was the recommendation. It's not just the committee's recommendation, that is what has come from the architect, from the, uh, Jeff Strub at the, uh. Crabtree, uh, our architect's working on the project and it's pretty standard stuff as far as, um, most projects. Are set up that way, it's not anything unusual, it's not illegal, um, so, that is. What we're, we're presenting to the board and we had a brief discussion of the ten-year plan for the, the district. Uh, listing off all the capital projects that we have had in the queue for a long time, we've, we've gotten some of them. A lot of them actually are pretty much completed, that we had already started here in the last couple of years. And I think Dr. Redmond is going to meet with the, uh, administrators or principals and so on to revisit that. And make sure that their items that they had prioritized in, uh, a year, I think a year and a half or so ago. Uh, to see if that's still a case and, uh, but we are gonna concentrate this year on finishing up. The stuff that we've done and not really get too many things, new things going, only the things that we, um. Have really, uh, need to have done, done in the future, so. And just a couple of items, some informational. and just a couple of items, some informational thing. They were going to take a look at the, the Bucktail Jim wall. I think there's, uh, some, maybe some uh, problems with that that may need to, would be addressed. And we saw some drawings for, uh, that the architect Crabtree had done for, uh, a new design for our middle school. A canopy for front of the main entrance to the middle school. And it, uh, it looked pretty nice. So that's it.
Thank you. I got a, I got a couple of questions.
Was there ever a site assessment done up there?
What, what type of site assessment?
Well, how did we not know that this stuff was underground? Because it would be recorded in deeds, a septic system would be marked somewhere. This stuff shouldn't have come up as a surprise.
Well, I don't know, Chris, as far as there was, the architect had, had assessments done on the site. I don't know. It's, I don't think it's highly unusual to run into something like this whenever you're.
Oh, it's highly unusual. Not to know there's a septic system there and you're going to open it up and.
Well, it's not, it really isn't. I don't think it's a septic system is, was that, was your understanding?
I thought it was.
Was more like.
Before this, the, when the building was first built, or before the building was built, there was a septic system on site that processed the wastewater. When the sewer line and wastewater line went through there, that was ended and it was hooked together. I think the assumption was that was remediated back then. But you're talking, but.
Four years ago.
Okay, so we, truly nobody did a real good assessment on it is, is what I'm getting at. And how do you find an underground pit with oil and tanks and stuff in it? I don't understand that.
I think the way it was described, what they did to get rid of the septic system at the time.
Right.
They took dump and threw it in this hole and filled it in.
Is this something that we have to get permits from DEP and have them involved in stuff or?
They, they, when they dug it up, there was a minimal amount of residue, oil residue. They confined it, they stored it. Uh, they dug out around and got clean margins around it. And last I heard at the meeting, they were, they have to buy permit or by code, send out those samples to the state. They, they can be told where they can just deposit it.
Right. So that hole is still open because you're not allowed to fill them back in until you get your report back. Otherwise, you gotta dig it all back out again. That's why I'm wondering.
I'm not sure.
Oh, would you please go to the microphone? Or thank you.
Brett, it's right in front of you.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, the area that they found the, um, items underground are not where the actual building is going to be placed. It was off to the side. Over where they had an old, there were some old sheds and buildings over off to the side of the project. So it's not where the actual building is being put.
Okay.
But it is on the site. Um, so it is not going to delay the project and the, the building part of the project.
Okay, but we were told it was kind of an emergency. It had to be cleaned up now. That's why my question is, none of us were notified about a twenty-two thousand dollar expenditure. We didn't get a phone call, an email or nothing. Jeff just, Mr. Johnson just said it was kind of an emergency, had to fix it up now. And you're saying, wasn't that big a deal? It wasn't going to hold anything up. So I, I kind of like to know where we are.
If I could, the, the big deal was when that material was dumped out, it could have further seeped into the soil. So we needed to get that picked up and put into a lined container. And then have all the, the testing done. So the, it's true that it's not going to hold up the project. And that's, the twenty-two thousand dollars is not associated with the, the potentially contaminated soil. That's the twenty-two thousand dollars was for removal for the old sand filter that, uh, Butch was talking about.
Okay. Well, I would like to just request that if an emergency like this comes up again, we all get notified. Because I mean, we're all on the hook here.
Yeah, I apologize for not sending that notification out earlier. I know we sent it out a couple of days later. It should become much sooner. I apologize.
Thank you.
So this, these tanks, they are not where the building's going. Why were they excavated out then? Can you answer that?
And again, I would defer these questions to Rob, really. Um, Rob is working, you know, closely with the architects. Um, so.
I mean, is it, we knew they were there and we decided to take them out while we're doing this? While we're dropping all this money that we're going to just throw a little bit more at it?
Yeah, again, uh, those are questions that.
Sounds careless to me.
I don't think that they knew that they were there. And to say that.
They must have known they were there.
No, they didn't know that they were there, Tom.
How could they not have if they had the buildings there in the, in the seventies? They knew they were there. We just got done here and that they filled them in. Somebody knew they were there. It's very poor. You don't just rip ground up without knowing what's underneath. That's not how construction works.
Well, it's unfortunate Mr. Pacella isn't here with us tonight to answer those questions because he is at a conference and I'm sure he'll be happy to answer anything you have next week.
I just find, feel that it's very irresponsible. You just don't dig ground up without knowing what's underneath. That's not how it works. You might know numbers, but you don't know construction.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just a messenger, Tom.
All right. Moving into finance, no other questions on the facilities? Let's move to the finance, Jeff?
Okay, finance, uh, you've already heard, uh, some of the things that we talked about. Um, Joni did the presentation for us, for the committee that you saw earlier this evening on the budget and how that's shaping up at this point. And so she, she gave us that, uh, same presentation. Uh, second item was, if you recall, um, for those of you that were here, uh, a year ago, we had, uh, taken some of our, of the fund balance money and invested it. Uh, I believe it was seven million dollars and also two hundred thousand dollars of the uh, food service monies, invested that in some CDs. And those CDs are now coming, uh, expire here at, on the tenth, I believe, of this month. And, uh, we were thinking, we aren't going to, we're not going to reinvest it. But in exploring that, Joni found out that we was able, we were able to get a, a really nice rate at five and a quarter percent for a three-month investment on these, uh, on these monies. It will, uh, the seven million dollars will, uh, yield us in, uh, the three months investment, almost ninety-two thousand dollars. And I think the two, two hundred thousand dollars will yield us almost twenty-eight hundred dollars in interest. So, uh, it's kind of a no-brainer. You don't pass that kind of thing up. So we are recommending that, uh, we go ahead and, and reinvest those, those dollars uh, for that kind of an interest return. Also, you'll see in your uh, agenda here later on, there, we are offering a early retirement incentive to the, uh, teaching, teachers group as far as, uh, and this is, would apply to anybody that has thirty or more years of Peasars experience. It doesn't necessarily have to all be in Keystone, but with, with, uh, years in Peasars. And they, uh, we're going to offer them a fifty dollars in the, for every unused sick day that they've accumulated by the end of the year. Uh, the end of the fiscal year, which is June thirtieth, and also an additional year of the employee's current health plan. As an incentive for this. And so, um, they will have, if we vote to approve this and all of it is, it's a setup as an MOU, it's a one-time thing. It's not, it's, uh, just a one, one time offer. And it is, uh, they have one month from the time that we would approve it. Should we do that next week, uh, to take advantage of the offer? So the last item on, that we discussed was, and again, you'll see this in your, in your agenda. We are to approve, all school districts in the intermediate unit are required to approve the, uh, central intermediate unit, uh, central intermediate unit budget, your operating, general operating budget, which is a little over two million dollars. It does not cost, uh, we, we are not paying any of that two million dollars. We don't pay into it. We just have to approve it as a member district of the intermediate unit. Uh, I believe there's twelve or thirteen school districts in Clearfield, Clinton and center counties that are part of the IU. So it's pretty much a formality. The only thing we pay the IU for uh, is any kind of services that we would, we would, uh, buy from them. And I, I asked Dr. Redmond to give you a handout about the intermediate unit. And it gives you a quick fast facts about it for, especially for the new folks that may not, I know Dr. Baldino had some questions at our finance meeting about it. Uh, so, uh, hopefully this will give you a little bit of a background and I, I can have Dr. Endler, the executive director, maybe come next month and give us a little more information on it. So that's it.
Thank you. Brett, can I ask you to take over a moment? I just scared myself for a minute and I'll be back.
Okay, yes.
We can just take a break if you want to, if you want to miss it.
We'll just keep going. So, all right. So we are now, okay, after that, okay, next is, uh, the treasures report. Does anybody have any questions on the treasure report? None? Okay. Uh, financial reports, any questions on that? None? All right, let's go to enrollment report. Does anybody have any questions on the enrollment report? None? Okay, uh, next, uh, this is for information, superintendent attendance to the, uh, twenty-twenty-four PARSS conference. Uh, this is one of the conferences that you go to, to.
Yeah, this is a networking opportunity, uh, amongst the rural school districts association, of which Keystone Central is a member. Uh, so it's, uh, an opportunity for me to work with the other, uh, rural school district superintendents, um, in the state.
Okay. And, um, the next is the, uh, resolution one forty-five electronic signature for the C, CTE superintendent. Uh, you want to explain a little bit about that?
For both this one and the next one, uh, in order for me to, uh, sign off on the grants that we're applying for, for both CTE and for, um, the, uh, rest of the school district. I need to have a resolution of approval to use an electronic sig- signature for me. Uh, and it's a requirement that, um, that we have to have in place in order for me to sign off on the grants.
And this is something that we've already had before. It's just a renewal because you're new. So, all right.
This is just to apply for grants?
Uh, it's to sign off on all kinds of things that come through on the, the electronic system. Some of its reports, a lot of its grants. It's kind of a mixture of things. It's just the, it's the required way for me to sign off on how we do some of that communication with the state.
Does any of this stuff that you sign off on get communicated to us? So we know what's going on or?
Uh, on some things, uh, when, when appropriate, on, on some things you will. But on grant applications, it's, you'll hear about it.
Right.
We win the grant.
You're not signing, we're not authorizing you to sign anything that's going to commit us to anything.
No.
No.
No, no, this is just, no, reports come through then a superintendent.
Yeah.
No, no.
We're going to have another problem with that already.
Okay, uh, next, taxpayer settlement. Okay, this is something that we, uh, we've already discussed. Um, next, yes, CIU ten, general operating, operations budget. Okay, any questions on that? Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Yes, um, this was presented during the committee meeting. And I did have a concern. Um, I thought maybe just because of, you know, COVID. But when they went to balance their budget, um, it appears that they're just getting rid of their arts program for the kids, which had a great following and was super terrific. So, um, the chair, Chair Jeff said that when she comes to give us any overview of the program or what they're doing, that that would be a good time to ask her about that.
Uh, in the, since then, I, I, I went back and I, that is, that program is still in operation. I don't know why that's not marked in the budget, but they are still, that, there's still schools using that. And I need to find out further from her exactly how that's being funded. But I know that there are, in fact, there was just a school that did something recently with that. So.
Great.
I just think it's been, being funded differently through a different grant or something.
That would be wonderful because then find out if we're taking advantage. That's great. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, next, we're talking about the, uh, repository properties. Does anybody have any questions on this? I know this is a big thing with Butch. And actually, this one here, I think he's actually on for favor of this one. So.
Because the six hundred dollars.
This is just, we're selling properties that nobody wanted for anything else.
Actually, the way this, the way.
It's a county, state thing.
Uh, yeah, it all, it all, the way it all goes down through is, um, they try and get, sell it at like a, a sheriff sale at a tax sale, go through all those things. Nobody wants to buy these things.
Somebody's willing to pay something for something that's sitting.
Exactly. That way we get something.
Doing us absolutely no good.
No, as far as tax rules and stuff like that. So.
And the problem with.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
And I think the problem Butch has with it is that that's how it's, that's, it's being taxed at that rate.
Six hundred dollars.
The real estate tax is, they're paying taxes on a six hundred dollar property, which is miniscule.
Right.
And that's the, and, and that's until they improve it.
Until then, okay.
Until another assessment is actually done, yes. So, all right.
Okay.
Okay. And let's see now, uh.
Well, here comes Butch.
Okay.
You just missed your favorite topic.
You just missed your favorite talk, topic. The repository stuff.
Yes. Uh, I apologize for leaving. I'm sorry. I just.
No, it's.
No, that's cool.
Doesn't matter.
The repository sale this time is three properties on Fourteenth Street in Renovo. I don't remember the three addresses, but, uh, what it is, it's a road building that Renovo Borough condemned out three years ago.
The one that had the fire.
Yes, there was a fire there five years ago, maybe.
Yes.
They're trying to through, uh, condemning it. The people were all evicted. Uh, they're trying to purchase the building now. Uh, the taxes haven't been paid on, so the three properties that will purchase, it'll be moving ahead with FEMA funding to tear the building down. Is what the goal of Renovo Borough is. I think they're paying six hundred dollars per unit.
That's what it was, yeah, is.
So, yeah, so it's six hundred dollars per unit. So they're going to pay eighteen hundred dollars to get the three units, which will give them most of the properties that are enrolled. They'll be able to move ahead with FEMA funding to tear it down.
It's because of flood, right?
Yes, it's in a flood zone.
Yeah.
Uh, the buildings have, are not habitable. Yes, they're.
No, they're not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Even though I'm done set against repository sales, this one I kind of feel compelled to agree with because the, the goal of what it's for is not going to be put back on. Sometimes when they say please, for the five or six hundred dollars, they go back on the tax rules at that assessed value. So we end up getting five to ten dollars in taxes on it if someone buys it. And it's set there and, and they get worse shape than what they are.
Okay, we're on the change order procedure then. Each seven.
Okay, eight, seven. I think we discussed this earlier, the change order procedure. Any questions on any of that?
Why do we need it?
The project.
I would say the perfect example would be if on March fifteenth, something happens in the building that needs, or in the, in the building process, that needs immediate attention. Without this in place, we would not be able to do anything until the April meeting. So it could be a month delay.
But giving somebody the opportunity to spend fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents a day.
That's not going to happen.
It's not a day.
Well, but according to this, it can.
And there's, there's all, what's not written into that particular letter is there's considerable oversight with every expenditure. Everything is budgeted. Uh, every expenditure is reviewed by several folks. Uh, every expenditure is reviewed by several folks, uh, including it comes to our office, goes to business office. It's all has to fit within the budget. So it's not as if that, we're not granting anybody free reign. We're providing the flexibility that's necessary to keep a project on target. If the project goes over time, because we don't, we can't make changes in timely fashion. Then it ends up costing a lot more when we have to try to keep a building open. Uh, past the start date in September when we want to get kids into the new school.
But being able for somebody to do that, and I brought up that thing that Mrs. Whitney brought up. That section five oh eight, we're not, the board is not. Having any say so on what's being done and.
Did our solicitor review this?
Uh, why does it not say in here that there's gonna be oversight or anything on it? According, you read this contract.
That's not a contract, that's just a recommendation.
Okay, well, I'm not, I cannot in my heart say we're gonna take fifteen thousand dollars possibly a day. And hand it to somebody at taxpayers' money. We're not being fiscally responsible doing that. And it's up to thirty thousand dollars for a committee to review, that should be going through a board.
Superintendent and.
Well, we, we need to be, we need to be a little bit more responsible than that.
The wording is very. I think it would be helpful, I mean, I'm on the fence right now with this, because I'd like the solicitor to come back with actual wording. And that's how we do the motion, or at least that's how we can discuss it, because right now, um, this isn't, this is just being objective. You know, we don't even have a definition of what an emergency is, and I know that sounds silly. But in something like this, I definitely request that the solicitor look at this, give us some advice. Um, you know, pros, cons, how should we word the motion?
Yeah, where's the oversight?
Yeah, I mean, it should all be in there, you know.
I understand stuff happens and emergencies happen, but ultimately, the nine of us.
So you wanna, every time that we have the problem come up with the building, where something unexpected happens. Every single time, you're saying that we need to call a special board meeting to vote on it, is basically what you're.
Spend fifteen thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars, we need to discuss it.
Okay, and 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 that's, that's fine.
Give me a freelance into your checkbook and just say, here you go.
Kind of, are you basically saying then that you aren't trusting the judgment of your superintendent and your other people that are working for you?
No, I'm saying I want to do things fiscally responsibly. It doesn't have anything to do with trust.
I think we're kind of deadlocked. I think they'll move on. I think what we probably could do is like Elizabeth suggested, let's have David Lindsay look this over. Hopefully we can get a response back between now and next Thursday when we vote.
Twenty four hours.
So we could be able to get it back before then, uh, have some kind of recommendation from him, what he suggests, and move forward at that time. Does that suit everybody?
If we're gonna, if we're gonna involve a lawyer, I'd like a specific question answered. And is this violating that section of the law?
That's part of it.
That says we have to, that we have to approve everything over a hundred dollars. That concerns me. I think that. I think that we may have violated the law in the fight in the committee when we did this. I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know.
So when we have David review, actually, we have specific questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Just want to make sure we're doing it right.
That's what I've been wrote down, we're gonna make sure we're following the law.
And we definitely violated the Sunshine Act if, if, if the, there wasn't room for public comment. Because I checked the bylaws and the Sunshine Act, we don't meet, it's, there's no, there's no exception for committees. And the bylaws call for public input at all the committee meetings, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, definitely.
Moving right along, the number eight, settlement agreement. Any questions on the settlement agreement?
It was well presented.
Uh, under policy, uh, as Chris said, we have policy two fifty four, fifty four. Interstate compact on education too for military children, it's something that uh, we need to do.
We're pretty much all doing it anyway.
We're doing it, but it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just think that now that we got that in there, you know, it's super terrific, so. I'm really.
Any questions on that?
You did a good job.
Any questions on the minutes from. At a work session, voting meeting, policy meeting, any questions in any of the minutes? Moving down to business, K one, we have bills for payment. Any question on the bills?
I got questions on that.
Go ahead, Chris.
Is there any way that under the bills for payment, Johnny? That you can do it by the school and kind of categorize. What's going on, like instead of having to hunt ten different pages? For something with sports where they're scattered all over, we can categorize it. Bucktail School, Middle School, High School, Activities, Sports, whatever. So it's easier to read instead of searching all over. We gotta look through twenty seven different pages. Okay, I've. I think it would make it an easier read.
I, I highly agree with that, oh, yeah.
And then.
Yeah.
One of the big questions I got, and I guess this is gonna go to you, Dr. Redmond, who oversees all this? All what's being bought and spent and, because last month we bought them a Honda tractor, this year we're buying a Kubota. And it says equipment replacement, what's happening with the old equipment? Is it being sold? What's going on? Are we just out buying things because we can? And I look on here and I see page after page after page of stuff being bought on Amazon. I mean, one of the books that was being bought is a Milo and Stitch cookbook. What do we need a Milo and Stitch cookbook for?
So I think that getting into the details of how the budget works is, is probably a conversation that you and I should have. So I can, I I can get a little bit more into how that oversight system works, uh, for those.
I'd just like to know if somebody is guarding the hen house, that's all.
Absolutely, yep, happy to have that conversation.
Okay.
May I? Thank you, um. Uh, man, department manager of the finances. Johnny, um, not, not now, but I think, I don't know if it was pre-COVID, I don't remember. Pre-COVID, during COVID, when you first started, there was talk of potential, you were looking at different software. Um, maybe something more updated or flexible, so maybe at the finance committee, you can just let us know. You know, maybe there's a different software package that would be able to make it more transparent, I think is. Oh, well, look forward to the updates then. Thank you.
Hi, one more question on the bills, Eastburn and Gray. So this was, uh, there was a request, I think, Tom, that came from you to have a line adjusted in that contract. So then we sent it back, had that, that part taken out, and if I remember correctly, the specific concern was they could change the rates at any time.
Yeah.
Um, so we had that removed.
Perfect.
Current version.
Is there any, any cap on how much we get billed from these guys? Or is there timelines or anything or?
Not sure I answered your question.
Um, so some of this has to do with the, just the overall budget process, as we talked about earlier. And probably would be um, good to sit down and have a longer discussion about at some point in time. Um, but these are legal fees incurred by the tax office. Um, some of these fees are reimbursed. Um, but really, they depend on the project. Um, so here, there's two different solicitors that are being engaged, or are currently engaged, change firms. Um, we just need a new contract with the new firm. One helps us with um, more general uh, tax issues, and that would be. Um, non litigation work, and then the other one is specifically for litigation. Um, so really, once our, our current litigation ends that this attorney is working on, then that work with that specific attorney would end.
Any other questions?
It's good.
Uh, next, K three and four are the L B C switch bid from Turnkey, Turnkey Technology. And E plus Technology Incorporated. Question on what they are.
What are they?
No, I don't, I've never heard of this.
There are electronic parts that we need for, I mean, they're, they're part of our, our networking system.
Okay.
Do you want to address that?
Those bids are for the networking infrastructure for the new Liberty Curtain building.
Okay.
That would be ethernet cabling, switches, redundant power supplies, things of that nature.
Alright, I was just curious because, cause I'm like, what are we doing?
But that was my question, is that something that, did we, is that included in what we already passed? Or is this another expense for Liberty Curtain?
Does that come out of that soft cost we talked about?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay.
This, I mean, I wasn't here with, when all the stuff for Liberty Curtain was going through initially, this is kind of concerning me. Things keep popping up.
We put one point seven million dollars off to the side, the account for. Dr. Redman explained soft costs, that's why I'm wondering about that.
Am I able to speak to that? I don't know if you can hear me. Yeah, so we've been in discussions with that, uh, with Crabtree and the architects. These items specifically aren't included, these are the switches, the physical switches that go in a cabinet that connect everything together. The cabling, the infrastructure cabling is included in the project. Uh, there is a handful of other things like cameras, um. P A system supplies, stuff like that that are included. This stuff can be purchased through E-rate, but not through the project. Um, E-rate can only be funded to the school district or a library. So that's where that funding amount is, uh, you see that it starts at it. I forget exactly how much, but like twenty nine thousand, and then we're only paying about fifteen percent of that or so. Uh, as long as E-rate funding comes through, so. Part of it was a cost savings on our end, if we did it in the project, we'd be paying about, you know, full thirty thousand or so. Um, whereas if we do it outside of the project, uh, we're able to, you know, roll in those E-rate savings. So that's part one, part two is just, it wasn't really part of the project itself, so. Uh, throughout the discussions with them, we just kind of hashed out which pieces, technology department were responsible for. And which pieces were rolled directly into the actual construction, so that's why there's a little bit of a separation there. So those two products specifically are just technology supplies that we're able to apply E-rate funding to.
Jeremy, can you explain for the new folks what E-rate is?
Yeah, so uh, E-rate funding is a federal funding product. Uh, generally, we have to apply for it in the fiscal year before the fiscal year occurs. Um, we apply for it every year. There's two different categories of funding, category one and category two. They're broken down by specific product types. Um, category one, uh, right now for us is like a ninety percent discount. And that generally includes like our internet connection, our point to point, um, like building to building network connection, stuff like that. Those are generally like subscription costs. And then category two funding, there is a cap on that, and we're coming up close to it, which will be reset in twenty five, twenty six. Um, but for the twenty four, twenty five school year, we were able to apply for uh, both of these Liberty Curtain parts, uh, pieces. And still be within our category two budget for the period, so again, it just led to cost savings. Um, that's how we did the Central Mountain Middle School cabling project this year. Uh, like I said, it's based on free and reduced lunch counts, and there's various other methods federal government uses to. Make the calculation, um, but right now we're getting like a ninety, uh, eighty five to ninety percent discount, depending on the type of category it falls under.
Well, that was really interesting, but thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Uh, next up, we're gonna.
Didn't know that.
Uh, renew the CDs for dental fund that Jeff spoke about earlier on the finance committee. Any questions on that renewal?
That's a good move.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, personnel, any questions on the, there's a lengthy list of items on the personnel.
I, I had a question.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Um, are, are we approving this, or is it just for informational purposes only? I'm, I'm just sort of confused. The last two attachments, the thirteen dash one three zero five. And the one three, one four, are, those are just for informational purposes, right? Um, I don't know, that's my question. It's just a statute.
Yeah, it's just information. It's informational.
Okay, just, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Any questions on any of that?
No, it's good.
The only, the only question I have on any of that is. I know personnel is discussing that contract. Shouldn't there be two of them? One for an act one twenty officer and one for an act two thirty five? Cause they're two totally different levels.
What is this, the solicitor saying?
Sorry, I can't answer.
Oh.
Right.
Of course.
I think it's something we should talk about and look at, because uh, you're talking two totally different. Putting your stuff on the line and uh, schooling and licensing and everything else. And I don't think we should bunch them all together, I think we should split them out and show an incentive. To go from a two thirty five to an act one twenty. If we put an incentive there, that's a much higher up ordeal.
Think currently they've been listed together as both school resource officers, the difference being the ones that previously had act one twenty. I believe they can do summary offenses, including adults. Where the school resource officer that doesn't have one twenty can only do them with minors or students.
Right.
It's basically the difference, and our act one twenty were, most of ours were former.
I think we have two, two act one twenties.
They were, act one twenty, they were ex-state police that are retired, that still grandfathered in as a retired state police.
Right.
So they receive, I think there's two of them, they received that qualification as being a retired state police officer. Uh, the ones with the two thirty five. Two of them, I believe, one was a sheriff, came from the sheriff's department, and one came from another state agency, so.
I'm just wondering if there's something we ought to look at there and differentiate between the two of them. And maybe offer an incentive for the other ones that aren't act one twenty to go to that.
One of the things we have to keep in mind, though, is if we do do that and they go to that act one twenty, we're gonna lose them here. Because those are all, that act one twenty is only offered at certain times throughout the year. Through, I think about Bloomsburg, or, I mean, there's different places.
You're saying while they go for their training, yeah.
So during that training period, we're going to lose that officer.
Right.
So it's, I mean, they're kind of.
There's a whole bunch of things there to look at.
Right, so.
We'll see.
What, what the intention was. We found out through the years that they really never had a true contact with them. They were kind of piecemeal between the uh, support staff, act ninety three, they're kind of, so we just. We had an incident a while ago, and we found out that we never had a true contract with them.
Right.
We're trying to develop one.
This isn't really, this is an agreement. It's not a contract.
Okay.
And it's mainly just to, to delineate their benefits and.
I totally believe they need one.
Yeah, and it's gonna be.
Totally.
As I understood the discussions in committee, it was at their request.
Yes, it was at their request.
It's been fed back to them, and there was no request for any separation of anything, so I think that.
I think that's a good move.
Yeah, this is pretty much what, what the officers have spoken with, with uh, Dr. Zangara about. He was kind of media, mediating between them and us, so the discussions they all had. It's kind of what they've been asking for.
Right.
This is something that's been.
This is something that's been going on for like almost a year.
Oh, yeah.
For a while. So, yeah, so.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I still would like to, the solicitor, if he hasn't reviewed it.
Assistant, Swiss has already reviewed that agreement.
He did? Okay, thank you. Thank you. That wasn't sure.
As I told you, solicitor agrees. Anytime we have a contractor in agreement with personnel, the solicitor agrees on. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving through personnel, crickler, co-crickler, anything? We have athletics. Any questions on that? Overnight field trips, there's three, I think they all deal with, or with the band and war cores. Going to the state and regional competitions.
Yep.
No questions, I think, the cost, I think. I still can't figure out how they're doing it. They've gone to the area, Bayfront area for two hundred fifty dollars. So the cost is very minimal.
I was excited about the out-of-state field trip because I remember the first time I got to go to.
Yeah, the next one, so no questions on the band slash chorus. The next one is the out-of-state field trip with Rob Elementary School, going to Corning. So any questions on that? Chris said it's pretty exciting.
Some kids are gonna learn a lot with that.
Uh, good. Next up is the Mill Hall Community Park Baseball Field. I'm gonna lump it with the Beet Creek League and Field. These are actually disagreements or a memorandum of standards we do each year with Mill Hall and Beet Creek. Allow us to use their fields for, or varsity and JV baseball teams or Central Mountain to practice and or have games. Any questions on that? Next, other negotiations, we have the MOU with the, uh, teachers for the early retirement incentive that we discussed earlier. Any questions on any of that? The purpose is again, is to try to get, um, teachers to take advantage of it, to take the top teachers down, have the school district get early retirement to help cut costs and maybe get people who will not be replacing.
The only thing I, I had about it, I already asked, is can we make sure it's not a family plan for eight years?
It's already, it's out, it's outlined specifically how it's going to be.
Okay.
And the wording's been kept by our solicitor.
Yay, thank you.
My, my, and that deal that I had about the, uh, age fifty-five. Okay, whether that, you know, is gonna count here. What I was wondering is it, according to Peazer, you have to be fifty-five to retire, either thirty years or fifty-five. Has Peazer's said that they will waive that? Or are the teachers going to have to take a hit on the retirement?
It's thirty years or fifty years or fifty-five. He just said thirty years or fifty-five.
Thirty, no, thirty years and fifty-five.
Oh, and.
Huh?
No hit.
There's no hit from Peazer. So, you know, even though they're not fifty-five, let's say they're fifty-three. They're not gonna take a hit on their retirement. I'm just curious. Okay, all right, I'm just, I'm just, yeah, okay. I'm just, I'm just, you know. Okay, I'm just.
Okay, any other questions on the MOU?
Nope.
Uh, the next one is the support contract. I might have a chance to look that over.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on the support contract?
This is our secretary's contract.
Sorry, Cole.
That's gonna go flirt.
We, we try to do four or five year contracts.
Okay.
And the only things that changed were a red, right? That's.
Yes.
Yep.
Any questions on it?
Nope.
Like to thank Tracy and her team for, and the secretary team for working together. My experience sitting in on it is pretty decent arbitration, their talk and negotiations, it worked pretty well. I want to thank everyone involved. Uh, next up is the work agreement for the the officers.
This is the one I was talking about.
Yeah, so it's basically, we do have to clarify a couple of things. There will be a change. Um, we couldn't add it because it was too short of a notice to change it tonight. Um, but there was a change. Um, there's a line that says that they can't roll over their sick and personal time. But that they can, it's been past practice that they can accrue some sick and personal time. So that is going to be changed, um, for next week or review. It'll be changed on there. And a couple places it said contract, I asked that to be changed to agreement. Cause this is an agreement, not a contract. But basically this was just to clarify, um, their benefits, their insurance benefits, their holiday, their holidays, um, personal time, sick time, because it was kind of a mismatch between the other agreements, um, in place. So this, they asked for this to clarify all that and I think we did pretty well. Randy did a great job on this.
Correct.
Second trace to talk about it, it's F, on the second half, it talks about the officer can't, can't roll over their sick leave. That meant, we meant it to say they should be able to roll over.
Yep.
Is there a limit on how much they can roll over or no?
I think it's, there's no limit on sick time, but on personal days.
Okay.
Anyone good with that? Excellent.
Are you, are you done with?
Good with everything. We're done with my favorite one, oh, one.
Me, I, I would just like to say a shout out to someone. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, even though this is not on the agenda per se. But where's Kurt Lynch? Was he here? Oh, there he is. I just want everyone to understand, I'm not saying it was intentional, it was, or that it wasn't intentional. But I got a little bit angry when I saw the local House of Representatives, you know, oh, they got X amount of dollars for our CTC program. Well, and I clarified with Mr. Lynch, our CTC director, they do all the work. They get the idea, they write the grants, the CTC program. Then that application goes to the House of Representatives office. And then that individual just takes that paperwork or digital copy and then delivers it. And then, so Kurt Lynch and his team at CTC did all the legwork for the grants.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you very much.
Motion.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Uh, we have a special voting meeting. You guys would like to leave? I'm okay with. We're gonna be a few minutes, but we're gonna roll right into it. The people online, if you would like to stay online.
It's public.
So. We're gonna start in about a minute or two. Have fun.